All right, we will move to reports. I don't believe there was any workshops or conferences. Member Olson is absent. Member Keno, do you have a report from the City of Forslay?
I have a couple of issues with the City of Forslay. We all know this November, there are at least a few spots on the election for November. Marvane is running uncontested for mayor again. And Sam Kusnick, who as we all know is our school board liaison and has done an excellent job as being that liaison, is also running for office. And last but hardly least, as I have said probably in the last three or four meetings, the roundabout is finally done.
It looks beautiful.
Yes, it is. And it's a beautiful roundabout. Yes, it is.
It showcases our buildings.
It does.
All right. Thank you, Member Keno. And before we move forward, I did miss positive happenings on the agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
Just the staff development meeting. I mean, you know, we, a number of us attended the meeting and I thought that was excellent. I'd like to recognize, you know, and thank Dr. Pastano and Dr. Eddie Walls from D and R. I mean, I thought both did an excellent job. So it was just a great start to the year. I'm sorry that we couldn't all be up on the stage again as we have done in the past, singing a song or dancing, but unfortunately, it was a great, great meeting.
Well, I concur and I want to tell, congratulate our board chair on his excellent speech. I thought that he spoke with a lot of conviction and spoke directly to our staff and our teachers and it was just a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. That was a highlight, to be there, to see everybody back, to know, you know, have a good plan where we're going. I, and the presenters were, I only caught the first portion of it. I had to get back to work, but really great. And I also want to commend Dr. Massey for his leadership and his speech and welcoming the new staff. And it was a good event and socially distant and able to get so many people into the same event at once utilizing technology. So, yeah, thank you for that.
One other thing, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Massey, but we were hoping to get the PowerPoints for both presenters. So, I mean, if anybody wasn't at the meeting or would like to look in, there may be a chance.
Yeah, we do have Dr. Pastrana's slides and we'll get those to Diana who was attending today, so we'll get those out to the board.
Those are great.
And will that YouTube stay up?
YouTube will stay up. And so if you want to watch it every morning, you can consider it.
Event check around the YouTube.
Yes.
Great. Sorry I missed it. I was moving my stuff and then this is...
Priorities.
I think we...
All right. Thank you for that. We will move now to, I guess, Member Rayfield's absence, so we'll go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Massey?
Thank you. Could you want to grab my slides a little bit? So I'm going to just do a brief update on some opening school related items. You may not notice the subtle change here, but the ruined box that next to the F L now says "Learning Together, Not Planning." That's not to suggest that we are not still planning and adjusting and monitoring. We are, of course. But school starts September 8th. You've heard me say that this has been a daunting summer of planning and it has. We've had large stakeholder input in our planning for sure. But it's arguably true that the hardest work began this week when staff came back and started getting their head around our reopening plans and what that meant for their teaching. There's nothing normal, even though we're in-person elementary, there's nothing normal about this year. And sure staff will draw on what they've become accustomed to do and doing, but they're doing it in a very different way and a different world, of course, we all are aware of. So just a huge amount of credit to the amazing amount of work that is taking place throughout the week. And while tomorrow is not officially a workday, our schools will be full of teachers still getting themselves ready. And I think it's safe to say that Saturday, Sunday, Monday will be heavy with a continued plan and we prepare toward Tuesday. So a lot of credit goes to building to the work now taking place to make this learning year start happen. I want to walk through our county case numbers. And I want to highlight a few important pieces here. We've been monitoring county case numbers since July 30th, when these metrics were given to us by the governor. The metrics table above at the top there, we have now become familiar with, and it speaks to where we might be with our opening plan based on county case numbers. You know, we are driven by the county case numbers in Anoka, Chisago, and Washington County. And heard me say, and we have talked almost every time we have this conversation, that we start the big picture, which is where we at by way of county case numbers. And because we represent the borders of the counties, we actually look at the broader context and into the weeds a little bit around what it means for Forslay specifically. We've been, as I indicated, we monitor the two-week case count starting the week of July 18th. And you can see the metric based on the county case numbers over two-week period of time for 10,000 residents. Put us in in-person learning elementary and hybrid secondary. And each two-week period that'll act, you can see the relative increase in that metric as we move toward the start of the year. And of course, that has been a cause of concern and certainly heightened monitoring. And we've been doing that each step of the way. And we got our latest two-week run today because it gets released on Thursdays. And you can see Anoka actually drops slightly, still at the upper range of that 10 to 19 range. Chisago is ledging up, there's a big jump there, but still well within that range. But if you notice Washington County, we now have a count of 22.7. And that should, that should draw attention, and it does. We are now based on one county and our geography as part of that county, not the entire county, but the geography, would suggest that that is a number that causes us to dig deeper into what might be going on for a district. And might that number suggest that we alter our model? And again, we look broadly and then we look locally. So let's look locally. When we look locally, we're now looking at zip code counts. I want to point out that the zip code counts is a different number. Here we're looking at two-week count per 10,000 residents. We're not doing that here. We're looking at cumulative counts per zip code. If you look at 55025, starting 8/13, total number of positive identified cases, 138. And then the next week, the cumulative count of 163, if you slide over to the right, Week 2 suggests, or it doesn't suggest, but is a number that represents the increase from 8/13 to 8/20. It's an increase of 25 additional cases to the cumulative count. From 8/20 to 8/27, another 24 in that zip code, which represents Forslay and Columbus specifically. And then today, 9/3 represents an increase of 16 from the previous week. You'll notice that we go 25, 24, 16, which is a slowing of the cumulative case count in that zip code based on positive cases reported. Let's look at 55092, Wyoming, Linwood, and Spelko. And there you can see the case counts drop from the previous week from 11, and additional 11 from the previous week to, in this case, an additional eight from the previous week. So a slight drop there as well. Scandia, 55073, is relatively stable and Auring, Scandia area is relatively stable as well. I don't have, I do have a number for, I follow the Lineal Lakes area. I'm not showing it only because it includes Circle Pines, Lexington area, which gets toward the Lineal area. And it just doesn't represent our district well enough to let that kind of cloud our data, so to speak. So we're looking more globally at Anoka County, which is going down today, and the zip code, this zip code. I'm not so sure the average is a fair statistic, but I run it just to see what it does for us. The average of Week 1, or Week 2 increase over Week 1 equals 5. The increase, increases, the average of 9.5 is increased from Week 2 to Week 3, but a drop today for the previous week. So when we look at the aggregate, county as a whole, and locally our zip code, I would offer that we are still in that we need to be watching this because we are on the border of where the metric might suggest we should be. We are still fiercely committed to making sure that we are offering a safe plan for our students and our staff. We are in no way driven to be reckless or blind to the data, trying to let the data drive what we do. But the data I would, I would offer is more broad than just the county. Now let me take a minute, talk to you a little bit about the conversation we had with Minnesota Department of Health last Wednesday, I believe it was. And we had one of the school-related officials from the Minnesota Department of Health on the line. We had a good hour-long conversation specific to our counties and Forslay area schools and our decision to begin in-person elementary and hybrid secondary. And she pressed us on our safety plan and our reopening plans. And we walked her through the different measures we have in place at the elementary, the different measures we have for hybrid at the secondary, including at the secondary level, measures to, for instance, identify which kids sit where during lunch. That's a big deal in the event that a student gets positive and they're in the lunchroom with 100, 90, 200 other kids. Do we know who might be exposed with a positive case? So we are implementing a plan whereby when students sit down at the table, they write their name on a sheet of paper, so we can document who's at that table. We also have cameras and we can actually follow what kids might eat when they have contacted with the lunchroom. And then kids will be released to the lunch line to get their food. So we're regulating the contemplation of kids in the lunchroom by way of much easier contact rates in the event that we have a case in the lunchroom. We're allowing kids to enter multiple doors, so we don't have bottlenecking on the way into the school. Kids are going from Point A, class first hour, to Point B, second hour, as a transition, not a passing time. Passing time is permission for, let's congregate, let's gather until the bell rings, the one-minute bell, and then we'll scatter the class. Now kids will move at the end of Hour 1 directly to Hour 2. Our kids are going to want to stop and talk with their friends. We all did that when we were in high school, but in today's climate, they need to be moving from Point A to Point B. The staff are prepared to facilitate that move. So clearly kids are mixing, in fact, the health department officials at your hybrid elementary or secondary, which is, makes good sense. But the mixing of students is, is really the concern in your ability to contact rates. We've reduced at the middle school and high school, the numbers by 50%, plus the kids that are in Ranger Academy. So we've reduced the number of kids in the school by over 50% from state, allowing us to better track and monitor and regulate student contemplation. At the elementary level, I've talked quite a bit about the different measures in place that our planning team has developed and principals have developed in the respective schools. Primarily, first of all, while we're not hybrid, we've got 400 elementary kids that are in Ranger Academy. We've added seven FTE, further reducing class sizes to over $8. We have significantly lower class sizes in almost every case. There are still some that are in the mid-20s, but we've gotten rid of materials in classrooms and we've better spaced desks. And it's important to understand that at the elementary level, classes will stay as pods or cohorts. We are not mixing learning groups from one third-grade classroom to another third-grade classroom. They're staying together in that classroom for small group, within that classroom for large group. We're not mixing with other classes. At recess, they're measured someplace to monitor kids and they'll have, on the first day, they'll be able to play in this area, the next day they rotate to this area, the next day they get to play in this area as a class. So we're not going to put three groups, three classes out there and have a mix for 20 minutes. We're going to do our best to keep those kids together. Again, minimizing the exposure to other kids. We're spacing kids in lunchrooms. We're at Columbus Elementary, for instance, we have tables on the stage. We have tables that are going to be out in the entryway to the lunchroom as a way to minimize the number of kids at a lunchroom table. All these measures were, were talked about with the Minnesota Department of Health, giving her a high degree of comfort and confidence that we've got really good menu in place. With, with that conversation, then, we, we pressed her. If our numbers move from clearly in the 10 to 19 range to nudge to 20, 21 in one or two counties, should we use that as we must move? She said there's not a big difference between 22 and 19. If you're still able to keep your safety measures in place for kids, teachers, and you're minimizing exposure and the interaction of kids moving into school. All of that to suggest and offer as an update, then yes, 22.7 is, creates heightened concern for us. It means that we need to continue to really zero in and monitor that and drill into that number as we move forward, and we will do that. We have another update next Thursday. But at this stage, given the planning and that slight jump in Washington County and in mind with the zip code data, I believe we should, we should continue with in-person elementary, hybrid secondary, as we've been planning since July 30th. And we'll continue to monitor weekly as these numbers continue to move and adjust. And we're prepared, I would say, for a community that we may need to move. And no family should be surprised if we need to move from in-person to hybrid. If families need any daycare arrangements, they should be thinking that through now. What this means at home, they should be thinking this through now. We don't take lightly what a decision might do to family dynamics, affect the situations, the resources. At the same time, our job is to provide a safe learning environment. So that is, I'll pause for questions in just a moment. We developed this week our own checklist. So what you see here, this was mailed out or emailed out today as a resource for families. It'll be on our website as well. We're asking families to do a daily wellness check with the kids before they leave the front door, the back door, whatever they need to get on the bus or happen to call you to school. And you can send out the first bond, please check to your child's neck before leaving school. We are not tempted to check. We're asking families to do that at home. And we are very clear, do not send your child to school if they have any of the common symptoms or two or more of the less common symptoms. And then it spells out when and if it should be checked, and if positive, then what they should be doing by way of quarantine. So very clearly and explicit in terms of this guidance. I've talked about the safety precautions, specifically 406 Ranger Academy kids at the elementary, 460 Ranger Academy students at the secondary level. And that we also were provided by Minnesota Department of Health, a decision-making tree, if this, then that, by way of a positive case or exposure, so that we're very clear that if there's a positive case in a home, what that means for siblings. Or if there's an exposure that, that doesn't fit the alarming exposure of 15 minutes within 16 circle, what that means for monitoring symptoms and so on. So that would be very helpful to our resource partners. So with that, I will pause before we get to another topic and take any questions.
Well, I think what's paramount is the health and safety of our teachers and our students and all of our staff. And I really like how you're drilling down on that, that information where the counties intersect in those corners of our school district. And I'm happy to hear that you're really figuring out what that looks like for us overall. Do you feel like when you had the visit from the woman from the M D H, that it sounds like we're, we're really going on the science and the data? She's pretty confident with what our protocols are, correct?
Yeah, we've got, we've got a good metric to use, but there's no exact science here. I think we all understand that. But we're using the best advice, the best guidance from our local help, state help, Washington County Health Department has been very helpful as well, helping misunderstand what happened in Washington County. She believes that we've got a good plan in place and that we're being deliberate and thoughtful and using framework information as we make decisions as we move forward.
That's all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Couple little questions. Do the children in Ranger Academy have their class data yet, so they know a teacher assigned?
I believe that we've assigned at the elementary level who classroom assignments? Yes. And that the secondary levels teams have their way to a class, have their...
Okay. And I appreciate the level of detail that we have out there. We still end up getting questions from our friends, of course, but being able to refer them in is really good. People are asking about what type of warning they would get. Like we know when you see numbers and we know when we're getting close, but would there be a, is there a protocol that they will be aware of, of you're going to text or we're going to talk, we'll say, okay, Monday we're going to hybrid and we're talking about Tuesday the previous week? Or would it be just overnight?
You know, our, our hope and the direction we receive from the Department of Education is that we would provide a minimum one we notice before we make that transition. We're also provided the opportunity to provide staff planning time for, for that transition, depending upon what that transition looks like and log rent, the calendar, and so on.
So, I just, with the, with the possibility of doing the hybrid for the, for elementary, are we like, for smart school age care, are we like, really like, keeping that, I mean, you know, for the future? I mean, are we, if that happens in the week, are we going to deal with how many more kids?
Yeah, Director McKinnon and his staff have been working really hard, having the framework ready to go and the system ready to go. If we go hybrid, we're providing childcare for children, parents who work in tier one industries, the critical service industries. So we're ready to provide that school-based childcare for tier one workers if we move to hybrid.
Member Tyson?
Well, I just have one more quick question, Steve. So when we do make that switch, and remember the listener asked that question, so we get like a week's notice for parents, do teachers get any extra time to prepare for that and not go into that feeling just all, you know, not, not ready and kind of stressed?
Yeah. We will most likely provide time for teachers to make that transition. I don't know what that amount of time looks like if it's at the end of, we're going into MBA and maybe a couple of days, if it's kind of a quarter, we'll take all those things into consideration and provide the time that is necessary for staff to prepare for that transition.
That's good. That's fine. Thank you.
These decisions and these plans weigh heavy on families. They weigh heavy on our teaching staff. There's probably not a teacher or an employee in the district that isn't monitoring this and isn't thinking about this on a regular basis.
Without further questions, I'm going to take just a few minutes and highlight some things that were already shared. Thank you for sharing. Our keynote address with Dr. Walls and Dr. Pastrana. We have a thousand-plus employees digitally or in person locked into this field. So we are able to move our entire staff system from food service workers to our bus drivers, custodians, teaching staff, paraprofessionals, staff, all staff members engaged in this important training. I was moved by Pastrana's quote, "We cannot function in a multi-cultural world with a monoculture mindset." And we cannot practice equity and inclusion without cultural competence and systems." So just some really important concepts, work, and movements for our district. You know, we've been working with the Everwarp Launch Project for almost a year now, and we're now ready to move into the Equity Innovation Lab. Those dates are set. We begin on Saturday, September 26th, from 9:00 to 12:30. These will all be virtual. We had the three learning series sessions last October, cultural lens, cultural bias, dimensions of diversity. Now we're into moving from learning to action. So these lab sessions and work session is all about setting a community-wide, district-wide vision around what does it mean to create a community of belonging? And what are the actions that we're taking as a system? And you can see the alignment towards the teacher plan with this work as well. So I will be sharing out these dates with the board back there on my weekly updates. Please mark your calendars if you're available and find your plans. And I'm grateful for Principal Kenny Newby and his work and his presentation today highlighting the work that we are doing. There are many things that we are doing as a district, as Chair Peterson mentioned, around equity, inclusion, belonging, creating a more just and equitable system for all of our kids. Some of that key work was, was launched in just a powerful way across our system. Every school will have what, what they're calling a hate speech presentation. So we are very clear and defining for every student, what does, what is considered hate speech? Slurps, hateful language. And preparing staff for when staff hear that, what does their response look like? Where do they, what do they do with that information? What they refer them, they intervene, but they refer that student or that group to the safe space team that then can work with that student or that group to better understand and educate, hold accountable, better understand and be great, get parents involved, and hopefully build understanding perspective, foundational relationship to begin to change that behavior and move, move forward with that behavior. So we're extremely excited about that. One of our staff members, I've developed a poster that we think really captures some of this and will be replicated this, adding this to our focus on this. And with that, that concludes my review. Thank you, Governor.
Thank you.
I really liked that poster though. I really liked that poster though.
Yeah, yes, I couldn't be happier with the work in progress that we're working toward in equity and inclusion and making sure that all people feel welcome in our district. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Second.
Do we motion a second? Any discussion?
I'd like to call seven point three. Sorry.
That's okay. We have a motion on the floor, though, currently. For, yeah, could you address it under discussion?
Sure.
Let's just do that.
Let's, that's great. I like that idea. So anyway, I wanted to recognize and thank you to our HR department and Donna. In the history of me, this is the longest classified sheet I've ever read. Wow. But anyway, I'd like to recognize Kathy Stuber's retirement from the early childhood family education. I had the, the honor of working with Kathy in the classroom, and she is a tremendous woman and, and very gifted in the area of early childhood. Kids would come in with separation or with crying, she could easily turn into smiles and have them thinking and play going, and she was just gifted with kids. And there are not many people like Kathy. Nothing ever got on her skin, paint all over the floor, paint on the walls, I mean frosting, you name it. So anyway, I want Kathy to have a wonderful retirement because she's so deserving, and as they're gonna be, she's gonna be very missed by many families, so. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, I'm Tyson, I'm a member of KETO.
On seven point five donations, we had a total this month of thirty-two oh seven oh four, three thousand two hundred and seven oh four dollars in donation. And specifically, I want to recognize one individual, Lynn Solani, contributed three thousand of the thirty-two hundred for an easy standard of all standards. So on behalf of the district and all of our schools, I really wanna thank all the individuals that participated, especially this individual for that wonderful donation.
Member KETO, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of achieving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to number eight, action items, close enrollment at the Student Transition Education Program staff, Dr. Massey.
And you, you, you've heard me say many, many times that we block enrollment for the local enrollment. But this is a case where due to a large current enrollment in STEM program, which is our adult transition program currently on Broadway and STEM building on the corner of Broadway and, I don't know, across the street.
David Speth.
Jeff, thank you. And we're actually using space in the education center as well, so we're combining space opportunities for that program. We're given our staff capacity to be too socially distant and provide a safe environment for those kids. Administration has recommended that we close enrollment to the major of the school year to the STEM program, unless enrollment drops and kids graduate, and then we consider the enrollment.
All right. What is your pleasure with closing enrollment? Motion to vote, sorry. I'm asking for a motion.
Oh. Mother of proof, eight point one.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I, I do have a question. What do you see at home at this time?
I, we're currently in fifty students.
And are you, there's, there's all.
Are they full in person or hybrid also?
At that time, we, yeah. Now, remember, for students on NAPD and special, receiving special education services in NAPD, it could decide that a particular student might come more physically than every other student, but the model appointment is hybrid and everything.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of eight point one signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to eight point two, recommendation to award bid for the CLC demolition and remodeling project, including Forest View Elementary HVAC controls, Director Martine.
Thank you, and good evening. The CLC remodeling will actually be done. If you approve this this evening, they'll begin this with this coming February, and it will be so that we can locate students from staff into a new facility and then no longer rent at Forest 67 Broadway. We're pleased with the coverage here. We're gonna ask you to approve all the alternates, so that increases the total contract to a total of six million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Of that, about three hundred thousand is the Forest View Elementary controls that Bill Schwartz has been seeking for quite some time. So we're pleased with this result, and we ask for you folks to approve those bids and alternates.
All right. Do we have any questions for Director Martine? Do we have a motion to?
I have a quick question. Is this within or below the budget numbers?
It's slightly above the estimate. However, this is gonna cross a couple of fiscal years, and so we'll have some payments that will be after July first.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve eight point two?
So.
Second.
I have no motion in a second. Discussion.
Well, I'm curious, Mr. Martine, have we demolished something before?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, do we need extra, like, insurance or anything?
Well, we'll have builder's risk insurance for this project, and the contractors also carry insurance.
Great. Thank you.
Question. I, I know with buildings encircled, a couple months ago, it was mentioned that local fire departments and police departments would participate testing some tools that they had before this actually comes out, and that's still happening.
It has been happening and will continue.
That, we have motion to approve the award for bid. All those in favor signify by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, we gotta do a roll call on this one, I believe. Yeah? Member Clerk?
Member KETO?
Aye.
Member KETO votes aye. Member Olson, though Olson is absent. Member Rayfield is absent. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Lutner votes aye. Member Parker?
Aye.
Member Parker votes aye.
All right. Thank you. Member Clerk, that will move to a three, approve the revised long-term facilities maintenance revenue plan for Forest Lake area schools, Director Martine.
Well, this project has a revision because the Minnesota Department of Education denied some of our air quality improvements using needlepoint bipolar injection. Hospitals for years have done bipolar ionization injection into the air, but some of their methods to create positive and negative ions have produced ozone. There's a new technology, it's about two years old now, needlepoint bipolar ionization, that doesn't produce any ozone. What this does, extra negative, extra positive ions in the air steals hydrogen atoms from viruses. That's why hospitals have been doing this for months and years. However, this isn't part of something that can be done with the long-term facility maintenance indoor air quality laws as currently written. We're hopeful that we can use some of the CRF funds to apply this technology to the secondary. So we took that five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar project out of the process and coming to you with roofing instead as replacement for that dollar. And the most interesting thing, I think, that happened in this process is we're underlining the bottom line, where it says Forest Lake is no longer the one D district. That's code for we now qualify for alternate facilities. So the budget remains unchanged. We're just swapping out an ionization project for roofing, and even better news at the bottom.
That's terrific.
We would ask for your approval this evening, and I've got some documents that the clerk would sign, so that we could send this in as a revision to the MBE tonight.
And any other questions for Director Martine?
So the air quality will still happen just under a different budget line, right?
Correct.
Okay.
What is your pleasure with eight point three?
Move to approve, eight point three. A second.
Have a motion in a second. Discussion.
I have a question for Mr. Martine.
Go ahead.
So I'm always amazed at, like, a ten-year plan and all the numbers you have to crunch and all the things you have to think about. So when you submitted that, it's for ten years, correct?
Yes, but the liability of anything beyond three years from now is very low. And we will be changing it, of course.
Right. So why did, why does it leave me ten years? Is that just the parameters?
I think it's a test to see if we're able to do math.
Well, thank you for all the work out of that, because I think it's crazy, but good job. Thank you.
It's exciting.
It is. You need to share pain.
There are ten years of it from us.
I thought it would never happen.
It's true that we started this, we're happy to be finished with Superintendent Massey. We have community members involved with Superintendent Massey, but Superintendent Smula started this effort down in the legislature.
Wow.
I remember it. I remember that.
That is incredible.
So we expect to hear a new goal lead, crusade for next time.
They'll have plenty of more goals.
I'm certain we will.
Plenty to layer.
A lot of work. A lot of work, it's right.
Any further discussion on eight three? Have a motion in a second. Member Clerk, would you please say a roll call?
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Peterson votes aye. Member Lutner votes aye. Member Parker?
Aye.
Parker votes aye. Member KETO?
Aye.
Member KETO votes aye. Member Olson and Member Rayfield are absent.
Moving on, we have nothing under discussion items. Item number ten, review the upcoming calendar dates.
I would want you to, September seventeenth is our mid-month meeting. We, we zone committees at that time. So if you're on the six o'clock committee, mark the calendar. Seven o'clock committee, mark the calendar. Our plan would be to be virtual with those committees because of the size of those committees and the new space here, and because of the tight turnaround after the seven o'clock, eight o'clock committee and the eight o'clock board meeting. We'll stay virtual for that brief board meeting that occurs in.
And we are looking, recruiting, we'll leave some members of our community, if you're trying to, if you want to.
Yeah, you know, I think it's an opportunity to engage folks in your district, and if they're interested in those different committees, I've shared those with you this week. Please share off with the director who is working those committees. If you're looking for logistic, maybe tell who those folks are, so we can communicate these and dates and form with those folks.
Hearing nothing further under the calendar updates, motion to adjourn would be in order.
Some move?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by aye.
Aye.
Be adjourned. Thank you, everyone.